All right, let me call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Is public comment, any public comment? John?
No comment.
Okay. Our one public member. On the consent agenda, I need to have a motion to approve the authorization for payroll bills for town fund, general assistance, road department, sewer. Also need approval for my reports of social services, employment center, food pantry, youth services, adult and family counseling, transportation, and financial. You will note in those reports how the demand for all those services continues to grow. And it's been a consistent, how would you say, trend. I believe that's because of the demand and the need, but also because I think we're getting more and more exposure within the community and what we're doing is becoming more known. So that is putting some pressure on us, but we are, at this point, still meeting the demand, I think, very effectively. The one area where we're, as you'll see on there, for the counseling, is where we are aggressively trying to maintain, to keep ahead of the waiting list in that area. So I have a motion to approve the authorization of payrolls or bills in the supervisor's report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. No roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. We have discussion of and action on the approval of minutes. This is from May 28, 2024, the regular board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or any questions on the minutes?
No.
If not, roll call.
Trustee Niordowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. There are no presentations, so we'll go to the reports, the elected officials' reports, the assessor.
You have my written report. I think the only thing I want to add here is, obviously, we've been open for appeals. It's slacked off now because we've been open for about three weeks now, and the majority has been taken care of, and we are up to, you know, we have no residuals that are sitting by, we're getting them done as they come in. However, we do close for appeals on July 1st. And coincidentally, that is the day that the second installment tax bill is going to be mailed, so we're going to be extraordinarily busy, you know, through July until August 1st, when that bill is due. What you do need to understand is, yet again, the county has made an error. In April, I believe it was the 4th of April, we sent exemptions in to be processed, we sent them in electronically, they were received, we had notification of receipt, however, by some unknown glitch, they were not processed. Now, we've been able to track them, we have dealt with the county on this, they have acknowledged their error. Fortunately for us, we only had 20 some odd and no disabled veterans. That would have been cataclysmic for a disabled veteran to get a full tax bill when it should have been zeroed out. So we sent out a letter to the homeowners involved, we explained the situation, we also explained to them what their, you know, path forward is, which is, get the bill. If the county does not get you a corrected bill in two to three weeks, pay the bill, they will be issuing a certificate of error. But again, this is a burden on our taxpayers, again with an error. And as aggravating as I am about this situation, you have to know what's going on in Wheeling. They had over 200 that were dropped by the county, some of which were disabled veterans. So they've sent out letters and tried to contact people, but again, it just seems like every year, there is yet another glitch or problem that we're having, and of course, they like to blame it on the computer system. Well, they've been working on this for seven years. One would have, you know, one would have thought that they would have gotten some of these problems solved by this time. So that was, that was an issue that we actually met with the county. We had a full meeting of the Cook County Township Assessors Association, they came out, apologized, what have you. So we'll see whether or not the, they've told us that they are going to send out automated certificates of error, so our people don't have to come in, but we've notified our people, hey, in the third week, if you don't hear anything, this is what you have to do.
This is the third year after the triennial. This year, I would assume, would be slower, but then next year will be the triennial.
Next year is going to be horrendous, because it will be the tri. And people are upset already, and it's sort of good news, bad news. Yeah, they mail the tax bill on July 1st, and we close for appeals. If, in fact, we had been extended to, into the middle of July, we'd see a lot more people. People are very upset with the high taxes. That's, you know, that's something we can't address, we can help them file the appeals. The other thing I mentioned in my report is that we were to meet what we thought was an invitation from the Board of Review for input on how our relationship could be improved, how we can improve our services to our taxpayers. As it turned out, one of the commissioners was excluded, and that put my jurisdiction and Wheeling in a very difficult situation. There is obviously ranker between the commissioners, and it really affects us from the standpoint that our jurisdiction is split. We have two commissioners that represent Elk Grove Township, and that's Commissioner Cardenas and Commissioner Steele. Well, if you've got them at each other for whatever reason, and quite frankly, I don't care what the reason is, I assume everybody's going to be a grown-up and play nice, you take an oath of office. I, you know, immediately went to the president of our association, because at that point, I will tell you, I was steamed, you know, when I found out that, in depth, what was going on. The meeting did go on, no commissioners were present, only the chief of staff for the board was present, and it was a productive meeting. I did not go simply because, A, we're open for appeals, and B, it, again, it puts us in a very difficult position when our jurisdiction is split, and so is Wheeling. I also believe some of Maine, so...
What's the impact of that, with the difficulties between the two commissioners? What is the consequence?
Well, the consequence, basically, is I believe that Commissioner Steele commissioned a program to assist in evaluating appeals. And the other two commissioners don't like that system, and I'm sure there are glitches in any system, particularly when it's new, but it's gotten really personal, where somebody has filed an ethics complaint against her, which she had to spend her own money to, with attorneys, to disprove, which was disproven.
And this is associated with her acquisition of that software?
I think that's the basis of it, and here's the other thing that, to me, is really problematic. All right, if her analysts are going over our appeals utilizing this system, you've got to have two commissioners approve any reduction, correct?
Yeah.
So if her people are approving based upon the data from the program that she's implemented, I've been told that when it's passed on, instead of reviewing that appeal, the other commissioners are starting from scratch, like it's brand-new. They're not even looking at her data. So how is this going to affect? I don't know. Well, you know, we'll see when we're open for board review, the kind of, I'm going to ask our taxpayers, when they file a board review complaint, to please let us know, you know, what the result was.
So you could have, you could have one board review member, if they do the analysis, their old traditional way, come up with this, and another Steele's program comes up with that, then they've got to agree before they can...
You've got to have two commissioners agreeing to grant the reduction.
So if they got different, if they come up with different results, then they got to hash it out, and this just takes a ton of time, extra time?
That's, of course, Commissioner Cardenas' thoughts on this, is that they're starting, you know, from square one, because they disapprove the program she's using. So it puts us, as I say, in an awkward position. If the commissioners were going to be there, if not all of them, I had let our president, Ali El-Safar, know that I could not bring myself to go if, you know, all the commissioners were not present. Fortunately for the rest of the executive board that went down there and was invited to the presentation, none of the commissioners were there.
All right, the other question for you is, on some of these legislative issues that are affecting the assessors, can you explain what they are and give us an update?
Basically, one of the things was that we were anticipating a change in the senior freeze amount, we were anticipating it being raised to 75,000. However, it did not make this session, and unless, and of course, they don't meet again until November, so unless they call a special session, we're not going to, we're not going to see that change. Assessor Kegy's office was against it, and was very vocal about it. And I think it was more in the timing rather than the amount, because if it hits, like, mid-year, they wouldn't have, you know, people who actually qualified, you know, would not have had a chance to file for that exemption, and now you're going back and doing certificates of error on that. So I think that if it does come about, it's probably going to be special session or, you know, after November, because at that point, it could be, in effect, January 1st, we've got the whole tax year, you know, previous tax year, and then people could have, you know, who qualified under the increased amount, you know, would be able to do so. So we'll see. I usually think something like this usually happens just before elections.
Right. Is there any further, I mean, developments regarding legislation about a board being able to hire an assessor?
I haven't heard anything, you know, on that. Again, took that to our organization and the executive committee, you know. If, in fact, that comes up, we will certainly file a brief saying that we are against that, that that's just, it was agreed not only by our executive committee, but by the body as a whole, that this was an infringement on the voting rights of our citizens.
And what the, what this legislation is, is there, is legislation that was put forward that says that a board can choose, can make, a board can make an ordinance to eliminate the position, an elected position of assessor at the end of their term, and then hire an assessor going forward? They could also change it back. There's nothing that says they couldn't change it back, which opens the door for a lot of potentially political games. It is not like the Road and Bridge where a referendum has to be put forward, and the taxpayers then vote on it, which is really strange to me, that in the, in the, at least you would think they would require it to be a referendum, that the taxpayers would have to vote to change the position. But this is part of, associated with the issues that some townships are having in terms of, let's say Connie stepped down in the middle of the year, and they try to find someone to replace, and they can't find someone because they don't have the certification they need, or the person doesn't want to stand up and do it, or whatever, doesn't have to run for election, or whatever the case may be. But I think, personally, I feel this is a little draconian, and I would think you would agree with it, too.
Absolutely, from, and again, particularly from the standpoint, I'm getting more and more concerned about the way our voters are being treated, like they don't have common sense to, this is supposed to be a representative government, and therefore, if you elect someone, if the people are electing them, that is the way it should proceed. But I'm seeing all of these manipulations that I find very, very concerning. As to the jurisdictions, yes, there are problems not only in Cook County, but throughout the state, to get certified professionals in the assessment offices. Downstate, it's certainly understandable why they don't pay a living wage, and a lot of them have gone to multi-township jurisdictions. Now, in Cook County, what I'm seeing is when there is a vacancy and no one is certified, that they will get another assessor from a neighboring jurisdiction and hire them temporarily. And that seems to be fine, because, you know, by statute here, it's a part-time position.
Can they be an assessor for two townships?
Yes.
So you could hire them for, they're elected there, but hired here part-time, I'm saying, for instance, here, and then they'd have, then someone would have to run for election here the next time.
Right. So that is, for example, Ali El-Safar is assessor in Elk Park Township. However, when there was a vacancy in Berwyn, he also stepped in temporarily until they had someone to fill that position. And I'm seeing that in various situations.
And the certification process for the assessor, if they get that CAIO, CIAO?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make sure I got that right.
Well, it's just to think, chow, right?
What is that, if you could explain to the board what that involves?
Okay. To get your certification through the, it's through the Illinois Department of Revenue who grants the certification. Classes are given by the Illinois Property Assessment Institute, and also, not as much anymore, but the department also had classes that you could take. There's four core courses, and there's a couple of electives. Obviously, on the elective portion, it's ethics, it's office management, it's, you know, how does the office work, why does it work this way, et cetera. The core courses basically cover the three methodologies of determining value, and that's, you know, most of you are very familiar with sales comparison. You know, my house is worth, or my neighbor is worth 500,000, and it's the same house, then my house should be 500,000. But there are other methodologies of determining value, one of which is the income approach, which is usually applied to commercial and industrial property. Determining what revenues that property can generate tells you what their value should be. And then, of course, there is the method of determining cost replacement. How old is the building, what materials were used, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, what we're looking at, you know, with residential, is the sales comparison method, and with commercial industrial, usually it's the income approach.
And it's four courses, record core courses, and they can be done online, or do you have to go in?
You can do them online, you can even take your exam online. One of the, one of the situations that exist is a lot of older people don't like to take classes online, can be a little bit intimidating, and you have to be able to sit there, you know. Well, if you're going to sit there, it depends, we all learn differently. You know, some people learn visually, other people learn auditorially, some people need both to, you know, even tactily.
Right.
And so it depends on how you learn best, is, you know, how you would take the classes.
So all four, you could do online? I thought you had to go down for one of the classes, down to Springfield or Bloomington or something else?
No, 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 everything's online now.
And what does it cost, and how long do you think it usually takes?
Classes are about $400 a pe, you know, each class, and then if you're staying in a hotel, you've got hotel and meals.
If you go down and take it in person?
Yes, if you take it in person. They try to make it as easy as possible from the standpoint that there are classes that are given downtown Chicago, that a lot of the people from the CCAO go to. Also Naperville, Rockford, you know, that sort of thing, so that there are classes that are available in the northern Illinois area.
So if you, for instance, you step down in the middle of the, we didn't...
Don't tempt me.
If you step down, we could potentially hire another assessor to temporarily, while somebody...
Is getting certified.
Is getting certified. We can't, well, I don't know if we can pay for that person to get their certification.
No, I wouldn't think so, because at that point, they wouldn't be an elected official.
Right. So how long would it take them to do that normally, normally, would you say?
Normally, golly, now, I would think probably six months.
Six months.
Six months, six to eight months, because you're dedicating, these classes are a week long.
Yeah.
And they run from 8:30 in the morning until 4 o'clock, 4:30 in the afternoon.
So even if you're sitting on a computer, it takes that long to, yeah. Okay. All right, so that's very good, because that's, that's what the issue is in terms right now, why we have this legislation popping up, and the current legislation that sort of seems to be folk, that we, the, that legislature seems to be focusing on, or has been focusing on, to me, is, goes beyond, as Connie was saying, what is, what I think is appropriate for our elected, for the taxpayer and their ability to choose people and to hold them accountable, but they're flailing around trying to come up with some way to replace us, to replace or temporarily replace an assessor, which you can hire, like you said, you can hire...
Well, that's what they're certainly doing downstate with the multi-townships.
Yeah.
Because they can't fill the positions, particularly when you're into farming communities, you know, they don't have that many parcels, but those parcels are, you know, large, you know, maybe it's one farm, but, you know. And from a historical perspective, let me just add, when I was president of the Cook County Township Assessors Association, my executive board and I worked very, very hard to make sure that the people that were representing the taxpayers in Cook County had somebody who had some knowledge as to the assessment profession. And I've heard people say, well, you don't have to be a CIAO, you know, to be an assessor. Well, do we really want uneducated people to be running assessment offices and not be able to answer the questions? How, you know, how do you sit in front of a taxpayer and not be able to explain this, you know, the sales comparison method, or the income method, or what these exemptions are, how they're applied? So instead of looking for less qualified people, I maintain that it is a benefit to the taxpayer to have elected officials who actually know what they're doing.
Does anybody have any other questions for Connie? I think it was, this is something that's coming, becoming more and more to the head and discussed, so it would be appropriate for you guys to hear a little bit more about it. Thank you, Connie. Okay, any other questions for Connie?
Just quickly, so currently, if Connie were to resign, retire before her term was up, we would, we have the, you, supervisor has the authority to appoint or hire?
I can appoint someone if they're certified. If I can't find anyone certified, we, I could hire someone.
Understand.
I believe, I don't know if the...
They'd have to still be certified.
Yeah, they still, I could hire someone that's certified, whether it's another assessor who does this part-time, or whether it's an individual that was an assessor and happens to have the certification.
And they serve until the next election?
It would serve until the next election, or...
If it's an appointment, it could be until you have somebody that's certified in the township, but usually that's done by contract, and when it's done by contract, it usually runs until the end of the term.
And I can hire someone from outside the township. I can't appoint someone outside, has to be someone inside the township. So I could, if Connie stepped down now, for instance, I could hire someone to cover until she, her term was up, but we'd have to find someone to run for that position that's qualified now, and if it takes six months, that becomes, becomes an issue.
Part of the problem is the boards or the committeemen or whatever have been very lazy about this.
Yeah.
And that's where the problem lies, particularly in Cook County, is nobody thinks about it until it's election time. Well, great, now, now you run into problems. Planning is always very beneficial when it comes to...
And that's a good point, because if you knew that someone was not going to run again, the party could identify someone, and they could pay for them to take that, that course in advance, that person in advance. Because if the person pays out of their own pocket and then doesn't get elected, that becomes a concern to some people then. While, on the other hand, if the party pays for it and they don't get elected, at least they got the education out of it, right? That's important education.
Yeah, and a lot of our members do have backgrounds in real estate or appraisal, which is, of course, they have absolutely no problems with the classes whatsoever. So if, in fact, a committeeman or someone was looking for someone, then that is probably the two professions that you'd focus in.
Makes the most sense to look at, yeah, right. And in fact, your background's real estate.
Yes, I'm a managing broker.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Connie?
No.
If not, clerk?
I'm sticking with the clerk's office, much less complicated. We just had one FOIA that was a duplicate, they had asked for the same thing before, so Administrator Piotk got back to them. And then the only other thing going on is the Mount Prospect Parade, I think we're all ready for it. We have a good turnout of elected officials and staff, and you each got one of these. You got these from the printer, and this is what we're going to be handing out in the Mount Prospect Parade with all the information.
Along with candy, right?
Along with candy, yes. We just keep ordering more candy, I'm sure you'll run out of it, but...
Comes with candy.
But we are not able to use these in the Elk Grove Parade, because they do not allow any handouts. It has to be a water bottle, a pencil, something. So this is, my idea is this fan, if we could do maybe something like this, we could get all our information on that. So before we pursue that, I'm going to make sure that is acceptable to Elk Grove.
And these are generic enough, too, that we can use them for...
Yeah, for outreach, all kinds of things, so, so that's it.
Okay. I just got pushback though from Brian, he wanted his name bigger on him.
Maybe the next printing.
Okay, that's the clerk's report, and yeah, I hope everyone makes the parade, it's great to be out there, get seen, and your neighbors see as well, too. We will be at, we should probably be at the end of the parade again, we tend to be at the back of the parade. It's usually right before the lions, and then the public work trucks come and sweep up everything, so, but anyway, that's probably the location, she'll let everyone know where that location is. And I think, Dick, you're going to drive one of the vehicles?
Yeah, I'm going to drive the bus, I think.
And who's driving the other one? And who's driving the other one?
Kaylee.
Kaylee, okay. We'll have the food truck and one of the buses in it. Okay, any questions for the clerk? If not, the supervisor's report. In terms of events, we will have on June 28th, DMV Day, where the DMV will come in here. They give fifty, gave us 50 slots. We have filled them all and have a waiting list. The reason for this is, is they, in this, for this, they will not just do your driver's license, but also probably the-
Real ID.
What?
Real ID.
Real ID. We'll do the real ID. So we've got all slots filled and we got a waiting list. On, on August 9th, we'll have a passport day where we will, people can come in and get their passports. I mean, they're coming in regularly to the township to do this, but by having one day, it kind of puts a focus on it and maybe we can, we can handle a bunch more in one, in one sweep. Then on September 14th, we will, in the morning, we'll be having the shredding event with the Mount Prospect Lions Club at Rexplex in Mount Prospect. And usually there are Paul and I, and we usually like to have one or two trustees swing by for a while. You don't have to stay very long, it doesn't take a lot of people, so if you can come for an hour, that's good enough. But it'll be great to have, have you out, come out to help a little bit. But then at noon on the 14th, we are planning the grand opening for the Bike Safety and Challenge Course and our youth service, new youth services facilities. Izzy is putting a lot of time and effort into this. I, I don't want to really go into the details right now, but she's, I think she's putting together a, a very, very interesting and I think impactful grand opening. You know, a lot of people looking forward to Bike Safety opening up again. A lot of people are, are interested in the youth services and, you know, then what now that program has been expanded in some ways, the youth services. And so I, I think it's, it'll be very interesting. I, I know, I got a call from even one of the reporters, Hardy from WBPM. She was driving down, Nancy Hardy, she was driving down past, on a lights road, past the old, the old township hall and saw that the, the Bike Safety was being torn down. And she gave us a call and said, what's going on with the Bike Safety is, you know, is it, are you, are you, are you doing it, are you rebuilding it somewhere else? And we said, I said, yeah, we are, but it won't be probably until this fall that we'll be able to do something. So I'd, I'd like to know, I guess she went through it and they WB, so WBPM is interested then in covering the opening. So Izzy's really working on making this significant and, and making it a way that we can really make, make people aware, both from attending as well as coverage, what our youth services is and what are the different things that we provide, Bike Safety classes here for, you know, that we provide here with the, with the, with the schools, like 57 and 59, which is, which are, which are, by the way, are a little bit more modified because they have requirements, that they have more and more staff too. So we're filling more niches for them in some ways. So I, I, you know, this is something you want to put on your calendar for 9/14. And the mornings are shredding, and in the afternoon, which is probably the most important one to be at, would be the, the grand opening. I think that's it pretty, pretty well for the events, at least through September. There'll be a number of things beyond that. In terms of personnel, we are looking for a youth services program, ma-, director or specialist facilitator. I guess it's a youth services program facilitator. Ed, who is part-time, would move more to a more flex time, I'd say. Challenge Course Coordinator. This person would be more a full-time, right-hand person for, for Renee. That would allow us to fulfill a lot of the, the program needs that we have there that, that need to be staffed. And Ed has, needs, needs more flexibility, and so he would, his position will be a more flexible, lower cost, I mean, lower cost per hour type position. And probably it only be, need to work in spring, summer, and fall. We wouldn't need to be with the Challenge Course in winter. We're also, we also hired a new part-time Spanish-speaking therapist, Jeanette. We are still looking for another full-timer, part-timer, but she's going to be a really nice addition. We now have three full-time and two part-time, and we're still looking for one more part-time or full-time due to the demand that we, we have. We have a waiting list still, but this addition of Jeanette will nicely, will do it really ni-, will help us reduce that waiting list. I think those, that's the personnel issues, I would say. Well, I'll get to one other one here. The, the, the passport office, we're looking at moving that from that little room. When people come in and they go in that little room to the passport, we're getting such influx of demand for passport because we provide now the photos as well too, that we, we're looking at repositioning that into the conference room up front and turning that into a resident services office. They would, that office would do passports, it would do fishing licenses, do hunting licenses, it'd be handicapped placards, and Evelina would become a resident services specialist. And so there is a increasing demand for those services. The current facilities we have do not meet the demand and our ability to manage that properly. So we would change that conference room into a, an office for resident services. That, that little conference room that we have up front, that they were using for a previous little office, that will remain a, a conference room that we can use for short, small things, and we have this conference room back here. But it will be, we will be needing to change. We will be eliminating one, one conference room is what we'll be doing. Along with that, when that takes, after that takes place, we will be adding an evening, evening hours on Tuesdays. Food pantry, the resident services, and I believe the assessor's office is considering being open on Tuesday evenings and to allow for residents who have trouble getting here during the day to be able to use, use the, use the services and get, get access to the services. So that would, that wouldn't come until after we got the, that, that new resident services office set up. One other thing that's interesting for the food pantry, which we're exploring, is we're, we're looking at putting, this is kind of unique, boxes outside that you would get a code for. If you needed to pick up food in the evening, you would, you would indicate what you needed. Food would be placed in the box, I believe they're chilled even, and you would get a code for that box. And you would come, you'd come that evening and put your code in, take the food out of that box. We would only do meat or proteins probably on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday because if they don't show up, we don't want meat sitting in there over the weekend. But this is a way to, to not only like Tuesday evenings, but also, also over, maybe over weekends and stuff like that or during the week, to be able to provide food to people that just are working and can't get here. And we're, we're exploring that right now with the help of a, a company that we've, we've gotten to know a little ways here. One other thing that's being developed on the transportation side, Izzy's been working on this, is we're, we're looking at purchasing software that would allow us to manage the buses. It would be a real-time management program so that if a bus was delayed somewhere because somebody couldn't get out of the doctor's office quick enough, this program would help us be able to adjust the bus routes and the bus drivers would be notified accordingly. Rose, who is our transportation coordinator and also helps in the front office, this is something that she's, she's very familiar with, given the transportation work, coordination she's done in the past for the airlines, I believe it was, for the airlines. So I mean, they have much better software than, I mean, this is a really step down for her. But she's really excited about this because this would allow us to sort of automate the process rather than doing it all manually and then adjusting it and, and the drivers would just get their assignments and those would be adjusted in real time for them. So we're, we're looking at that at this particular point as well too. The only other things that I mentioned to you is that we did finish the auctioning off of all of our road and bridge equipment. It's somewhere around 30,000 we were able to get for the truck and, and the plow and-
That is it?
Yeah.
The last one?
Yeah, yeah. And so we've now gotten rid of all the equipment from the highway department. And, 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 and as you know, we've outsourced everything that's otherwise needed. Along with that is Mount Prospect just annexed the Hamilton Elizabeth Roads. Those were our last unincorporated areas in Mount Prospect. They did that last Tuesday, so we will be canceling, if you want to say, the, the intergovernment agreement, under-government agreement we have with them for the plowing because we don't need that anymore. Our IGA will sit, will only be with Elk Grove for the unincorporated areas in Elk Grove. And that'll save us a little bit of money. And the last thing is, well, two construction issues. Storage, if you get a chance, have you guys been back in that big room? Romero, our facilities manager, I thought this is going to cost us a hundred and some thousand dollars to redo that whole back, get it cleaned up, get it painted, get the cages, get the, get cage taken out and start getting the, the shelving in so that we, so food could be stored in a safe, clean way. He's done this on his own. He's gone in there, cut the cage out, he's painted the, cleaned and painted the floors, painting the walls. So we've saved a tremendous amount of money, and that storage facility now is, it's coming along to the point where we can start using it. Rather than have food, crates of food and pallets sitting around, we'll now have it organized. It'll be a much, it'll be a space we can keep clean much easier, and I think it'll be really efficient. We'll also have the medical storage, equipment storage back there as well too. And then just something different, on the back wall, I think what we're going to do, you have the rust, you know, we have the rust on the walls. If you've looked in the back, they're coming down from the metal and, and just other issues there. Romero suggested that we paint it green, a, a green color, and put the township logo on there so that the usage of there, of that space back there will look cleaner, look sharper, and it, it won't look like we got a decaying building or whatever it is. And that, he will do most of that work. I certainly have to get a vendor to help put the, the logo together, but he'll do most of that other work out there. He's been God sent. I mean, he has saved us, he is a great worker, he is, takes the initiative. He is upbeat and positive all the time, and, and he, and he's, he's saved us significance amounts. It's been a tremendously good, tremendously good hire, and if you see him or get to talk to him, just tell him what a great job he's doing. And we've got a great staff, but he's been a real kind of surprise, to be honest with you. I think that's about it. Does anybody have any other questions for me at this particular stage?
I got a question.
Yeah.
Now, you were saying you got that auction. Did we get 30,000 for both pieces or 30,000 for each?
For both.
The entire total of the three auctions we presented since that 10th of June, we sold us 75,000 dollars for that equipment plus the Mack truck we sold to Northfield that week it was, and that was at a total of, I believe, 100,000. So 175,000 dollars for the equipment that we bought.
So what'd you get for a wheel loader?
I can't tell you exactly because I don't remember the total, but I can look it up and get that.
And what about the truck?
Yeah, so the total was somewhere around 30, so one was, one was over 15 and one was right under, so 37,000.
In total, they're both around 30,000.
Okay.
And those were up, they were put up by auction by a company that we use in Wisconsin that is national in, in their exposure, and they're left up there for a week or two, and then we, we manage it from, we manage it from there. That was not a bad, that was actually a little bit better than, than I had kind of expected. I mean, there's wear and tear on this equipment, and, and, and so the fact that we can get that type of money is, is, is great in that. If there's, is there any other questions for me?
And the August 9th event?
Yes.
Passports, is that going to be by appointment or is that a walk-in?
No, that's walk-in.
Walk-in.
Okay, good question.
Um, yeah, and you know, some of the things this fall is going to be like, we'll have the government day for the kids, for the seniors. They'll come in here and we'll do a presentation and they'll do a board meeting. And then we'll also have the, the student days, we go for the freshmen into the high school. We've been doing it at Elk Grove, maybe look, expanding that. We've got, you know, a, a number of other items or days that we have added, maybe another community services day. I think we do another community services day. So there's, you'll, it's on, it's on the website now. The calendar's on the website and it shows you kind of what's, what's, what's coming up. And I think we're, we're out there doing a lot of positive things and, and official things for the taxpayers right now. Is any, anything else, anybody else have anything else right now? If not, okay, can I get a motion to approve the elected officials' reports?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. Okay, there's no correspondence, there is no old business. So on the new business, there is a, I don't know if you have the new agenda or not, but on the transfers of appropriations, it is for social services and then another one for road and department. It's not for the town fund. The transfers of appropriations are at the end of the year, if we, if, to, to adjust the budget to reflect what happened during the year, so that the budget reflects what the actual results of the, of the, of the, of the, how the budget actually turned out at the end of the year, we will transfer money between line items. And if it's under 10% of the budget, then we can just do it between line items. We don't need to, we don't need to have an amended budget. The town fund, we're going to have to have an amended budget. It's over 10% in terms of having to adjust and transfer, move from different light items. And the reason for that is, is construction. The, the COVID pushed everything back, and then things just washed into, this time washed into that time. And so we just got hit. This, last year, we had less than we paid, had to expend less than we expected. This year, we were 23, we expended, 22, we expended less, 23, we expended more. And it's timing issues. It's not, not so much additional funding. There are some, there were change orders that cost us more because everything gets pushed back, it costs more, but a lot of this was timing. So for now, it will be a transfer of appropriations for social services, transfer of appropriations for road and bridge, two separate items. You guys have had that information in your package. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer of appropriations for social services?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? This is where we are under 10%, and we can just move the items to correct the budgets. It's not a perfect way to say it, but to correct the budget to put it into how the year actually ended. Okay, no discussion, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right, transfer of appropriations for the road department, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions regarding the tran-, the transfer of appropriations for road and bridge? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski?
Aye.
Trustee Keenly?
Aye.
Trustee May?
Aye.
Trustee Perns?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. All right, so on the, just to be clear, on the town fund, we will, at the July meeting, have to present a amended budget. That means we have to have a hearing, we have to present it, have it seen, I mean, sit on, sit on, sit on the table for a month, have a hearing before whatever it means, and then approve it. So it's almost like how we do a, a budget. We have to redo it for the amended, for an amended budget. And once again, that's for, due to construction issues or timing. That will be next month. All right, the third item here is proposed changes for agency grant committee. Izzy, would you, you may want to get up at the, in- you may want to get up and explain a little bit what we're doing there?
Okay, so for the, for the agency grant committee, we just want to change the name to reflect better, except for what we're doing and how we're approaching everything. And then George also suggested that we should add more residents to the agency grants, so it kind of helps even out. There's a lot of people that have experience, professional experience into these kinds of fields, so that they can help make those decisions. So just those two, we just want to take a look at that policy and how to reflect better with the name, as well as do additional residents to help make decisions moving forward. I, another thing that we're doing, and I know that, so you are on the agency grant committee, is we'll do like a half-year check-in, so six months, kind of check-in with the township. We get those invoices and we send out those checks, but we don't always check in, and the agencies don't always follow up with us, or send invoices on time. And so we kind of need a liaison between the grant committee as well as the township, so we're on the same page. So we'll be kind of providing a little bit of like a check-in or a look-in, and we can also do some site visits and things like that. So that is actually it. So I finished as I got the microphone. Does anybody have any questions on those things? We'll kind of see how they turn out as we go. This will be the first time that we have a liaison kind of playing part. I think a lot of times we have questions that can't get answered during our meetings, especially when we get new applications, and we want to know, did they, did those agencies kind of do the things that they were supposed to do? Did we work well together? Were we able to lean on them when we couldn't fulfill some of those needs? So we don't always have those answers as we're reviewing new applications. I'm not in the room to do that with you, but I also don't check in with those agencies throughout the year. So we'll have somebody here to do that, kind of play ball with you.
Any questions for Izzy?
No.
Thank you.
I think the three, thanks Izzy. I think the three big things that are on here are, one is change the name to reflect more what this board does, which is mental health and wellness grants. The second thing is maybe change the committee to add some more residents, have a little more resident input in the committee. And then the third thing is the process, which I think the gentleman in our audience who was on the committee as a resident sort of highlighted that we needed to have a little more accountability from the organizations and agencies that we are granting money to, making sure that it is being used in the way that they presented, and in a way that we, that benefits us and our taxpayers. So those are the things, and that'll be addressed going ahead. And I do want to say, well, right, right, Izzy has been doing, as you know, she's the deputy administrator, she's been doing a fabulous job. I think she does a really, she's very good at identifying issues, coming up with solutions, not just identifying problems, come up with solutions, and then working collaboratively with Paul and myself in terms of, and other staff, the other rest of the staff, to come up with executing, how to properly execute these issues. And she is, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited in that, you know, Paul is going to be retiring with me, maybe even a little earlier, and so I think we have a very good succession in process here. So, thank you, Izzy. Okay, is there, is, is there any other discussion about, about the, I mean, those of you that were on the, you, were you on, what, what do you feel, or what do you, what is your, what is your, do you have any thoughts on this at all, or is that?
They, they sound like changes that are necessary, and will make the committee more productive and more efficient.
The same. It's, I think it's been taken over well, and the transparency as well as the, the process is advancing and improving, and this will.
Better than. Right. Okay. If there's, we don't need to take any action on this at this point. This will probably be brought up the next meeting, an updated dra, a new amended policy for the, for that committee, and we will address it there. Okay, I think that's a discussion and comment. Do the trustees have comments or questions, or things they want to discuss, any other issues at this particular stage?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay, nothing else?
Oh yeah, we got to do executive session.
We have to do executive session. So we, we, we have a, the need for an executive session. We don't have the Illinois Code associated with this. We need to have.
Oh.
We need to have, you have the.
She's got it.
Okay. The need, but when we go into executive session, we need to.
I probably have that.
We need to show, or put forward what, under what reason we're, we're doing the closed session, what gives us the authority to do it. So that's Illinois Code 5, whatever.
It should be in the minutes of when we did this last. It should be at the top of it. Let me see.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen him in a while.
Here. Oh, it's not in there either. Shoot.
I spent as much time here as I used to.
They do not have them. Usually Paul puts it on the minute, yeah, in the.
Okay. Well, I, I think that if we, I think if we then make sure that it's in the minutes properly, that that should be adequate.
Okay.
But we are, we are going into closed session for the disposal of.
The approval and release.
Of, 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 of minutes that can be, that meet the legal requirements to be disposed of, destroyed. But we will, I think if we, if we properly list the authorizing code and the minutes, we should be, should be okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, so we do need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I need a motion to adjourn to the closed session.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Can I have a vote?
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Illinois, Illinois Code 120 slash 2C21. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. All right, we will adjourn after the closed se, we'll re-adjourn after the closed session.
This is happy to be with me, so.
Call the, the meeting back to, back to the regular meeting of the Elk Grove Township Board of Directors, coming out of closed session, I'll call the meeting back to order. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Okay, I need a, a motion to amend the closed, the executive session minutes of November 27th to include the reason for the calling the meeting, which would be 5 Illinois, 5 I L C S 120 slash 2C21. I get a motion to approve the amending of those minutes to reflect that authority.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. Now, I also need a motion to approve, to approve and release the closed, the executive session minutes of September 5th, 2023, October 23rd, 2023, November 27th, 2003, and April 22nd, 2024, dealing with litigation and compensation. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, oh, we have a, a motion to approve in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Aye. All right, those are all the issues that I believe we need to address at the meeting. Once again, are there, is there any issues or any questions that the board wants to address at this point?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. I'll then, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion to, to adjourn. Is there any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Did you do all four of them?
Hmm?
You did.
I did all four of them.
Just making sure.